Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Canton Township Board of Trustees. Study session on November first, 2022 at 6:04 PM to order. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Engulaj.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Segrist.
Good evening.
Slavens.
Good evening.
And Snyderman.
Hello, everyone.
Can we please rise for the Pledge of Legions? The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before we approve the agenda, we have an award to give. So I don't know if you remember that employees were giving milestone awards, but we just happen to have a trustee who has a milestone award right now. That's Stephen Snyderman. So Stephen, in appreciation for your honorable service to Canton Township for 10 years. So here you go.
Hardest working guy in the building.
So we have to take a picture before you leave.
Okay. At 15 years, you'll get an office.
Yes, I have a few things I want to say.
Sure, go ahead.
Next half an hour. Wisdom I garnered over this tenure. Thank you.
Would you like to say a speech?
No, I've enjoyed every minute of it.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved.
Motion made by trustee trustee Foster, supported by treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved. So the item that we have on today is the study session for the fire department staffing. So I'm going to hand it over to Chris Stockline, and he's going to lead us through the presentation.
All right.
With his team.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's a beautiful night out, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here with us. Obviously, we've got Jamie Strazner, who you know, and Barb. We couldn't run the fire department without them. They obviously are the backbone of the fire department, and they keep me running and keep me in line. So I thank them for everything that they do and getting us here tonight and all this information for you. They really do all the work behind there, putting that stuff together for me. So thank you to both of you. You guys know that we came to you last April of '21, talked about Station Four and the need for Station Four. We went over a lot of that information, and I certainly don't want to beat a dead horse. We certainly still see the data trending in the direction where the need is there for it. So we're not going to spend a lot of time on Station Four per se, but we do want to touch on a few things just to brush up on that and discuss the station and the personnel that are going to be needed for that station. So our data, our continued run data shows that we're increasing by about 900 runs per year. And so we had that little null in 2020 where COVID hit us, and we saw that decrease. But you can see, you know, we're projected about 900 more runs this year than we were, and this is the steady increase that we're going to continue to see from every stat that Jamie is able to pull up and every statistic that we've got in the past. We know that there's an increase in the nursing homes. We know that there's an increase in population that we've seen. We know that we've got daytime population increasing with the amount of businesses that we continue to bring in, like Amazon just opened. So we're going to see those populations continue to increase, which will in turn make our run volume increase. This next slide is basically a trend of our mutual aid. You know, you guys know that we monitor this, and it's a pretty good indicator of how our staffing level is. And you can see back in '19, we had a pretty high mutual aid number, up there at 107 mutual aids that we called into our township for assistance. That's the year that we got the safer grant and hired the six people. And so you can see the drastic decrease just in that year after that. Now, some of that has to do with our run volume going down that year, but you can see since that year of 2020, we're seeing that increase of the 900 runs or roughly 900 runs, and we're continuing to see that increase at a steady pace of 10 a year. We know that, you know, Jamie could talk a whole day about mutual aid and the stats. We know that we're also supplying mutual aid to these other communities in a very similar manner. So it's been pretty even with the communities around us. So we know that that's not a huge factor as far as they're using our services a lot more than we're using their services. And we can get down to the nitty gritty of which communities are doing that, but all in all, we're calling them as much as they're calling us. And so we know that from this graph that, you know, the manpower makes a drastic difference on our mutual aid and our ability to respond to these calls. And we also know that this graph doesn't depict it, but we're going to talk about it a little bit, that it has a direct effect on our response times. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie to talk about the next slide here.
Thank you. Good evening. So what we're looking at right here is we're still really tracking the Station Four area responses or just how many calls we're getting by section. If you guys obviously remember that we're 36 square miles here, and that's the way we look at our run volume, right? By what section is the most busiest. Down in that Station Four area, you can see that it's getting busier as time goes. But the real key to this slide, and the reason why I brought this up was, 2022 run volume, we're at 27% in the Station Four planning zones. In the 2017 through 2022 planning zone viewpoint, it's at 26% of the run volume. And the good thing about this is we're looking for resiliency, we're looking for consistency in our data. And what this slide is basically showing is that if we were to draw a line between all these points, they're the same. So each year, we're seeing the same type of consistent run volume from this corner of the township. And this is all east of Hagerty Road of Hagerty, south of Palmer, generally in that area. But that is the key to this slide, that it's still busy down there, and it still is relevant even for 2022. All right, and the next slide is we're talking about predictors of survival after a cardiac arrest. And the reason why this is relevant, I brought this up during the Board Academy that we had last weekend at the fire station. And since we're an accredited agency, we're looking at outcomes and how we can improve the agency and what we can do to make things better. So we look at outcomes, like many agencies do, but I feel like we do it a little bit deeper. We're looking at time for us to put water on a fire. We're looking at outcomes from cardiac arrest calls. We're looking at just how long reaction times, from the time the tone goes off to the time we get on the air to go to a service call. We're looking at all those things as ways to improve the service. And this particular slide, the very first point, talks about the survival percentage for cardiac arrest calls for Canton Township, 7.2%. That's really what the national average is. We're right at the national average of 7.2% for someone to survive a cardiac arrest event in Canton. All the numbers after that 7.2% are basically what makes up that 7.2%. Where are we successful? Where aren't we successful? And obviously, if it's an unwitnessed-type arrest, means no one was around, and unfortunately, the person was found unconscious and in arrest, they have a very slim chance of surviving that. But where we do excel is when it's witnessed, when someone's there, when early CPR is done. And that's really where our outcome is going to be measured, by continuous, high-quality CPR. Anyone that's recently taken a CPR class with the fire department or in the township, that is the focus. It is all about high-quality CPR. That's what is making the difference in these calls. Additionally, the shockable rhythm, where it's 33.8% of people are able to be revived if they're in a shockable rhythm. That's the key for that. And those are the things that we're looking for, but all this is really based on time. Time is of the essence in these situations. You see the EMS CPR one has 0.0% chance of survival. That's if nothing is done for that patient until we get there. So we really rely on our brothers and sisters from PD. We rely on citizens that have CPR training or even our dispatchers to coach someone through CPR during a cardiac arrest call. Some of the most important things that we can do. We don't go on a ton of these types of calls, right? Same thing, we don't go on a ton of flyers, but when these big events happen, these are the measurable outcomes that can really make an impact in someone's life. The next slide is going to talk about where we are by grid. And I know this one's a little bit tough to see, but in this particular slide, I highlighted the Station Four area zones so that we could see how many cardiac arrest calls that we're getting in that area. Believe in my math's correct, we're up in the high 80s in those particular zones over the last four or five years. And the slide directly beneath that talks about the survival of these patients. And sadly, I don't have good information for the patients that have a cardiac event in those zones. We are getting people back, but we're also looking for, is it just, what is the survivability as far as are they neurologically intact after we've been able to provide the service? And we don't have good numbers for there, so that's an outcome that we really want to improve on, right? We want to be able to get to that area of the township faster so that we can deliver the life-saving care that these people are requiring. That was really the key to this slide. That's really our outcome that we're measuring, though. We really want to improve that neurologically intact patient. And there was one other point that I wanted to bring up to you guys that is just really a great thing for us, and I just want to tell everyone about it because we have recently, with the work of our CQI committee, and one of our captains, Rob DeVries, is also a big champion of this high-quality CPR and making these changes to improve these outcomes. We're working with our medical director through HEMS, which is how we have protocols designed on what we're supposed to do on a cardiac event call. And we are one of the only agencies in Michigan that is going to do a special study on something called Rise Up CPR. And what this is intended to do is to slowly raise someone's head up during a CPR call in an attempt to lower their inner craning of pressure. And there are studies out there that people are cited that this is a potential opportunity to really improve the outcomes. We're already seeing some really good numbers on some of the things that we're doing as far as the high-quality CPR. Our return of spontaneous circulation, or ROSC as we call it, is improved dramatically just this year alone. I don't have the full details on that data, but we're going to present them to you in the future. But we are pleased to work with our partners at HEMS, and we're also very excited that we're one of the only agencies in the state of Michigan that, number one, is looking this closely at this stuff, and number two, that HEMS was willing to allow us to augment our protocols and initiate, I don't know, a different way of looking at a cardiac arrest call. Very exciting.
I'll also add, and those of you that were able to make the academy, you can see the reason it's so important to have extra hands on scene there. You know, we're carrying a ton of bags now. We're carrying oxygen, we're carrying medications, we're carrying all these things into a scene, and now we're adding another layer. And these medics have been wonderful at embracing that because they know that the outcome of these patients, when we get them back in there, you know, neurologically intact, that it's a life changer for them, right? Instead of having somebody, you know, stay alive for 24 hours or 48 hours so somebody can come in, their family can come in and say goodbye to them, compared to somebody walking out of a hospital is a big difference. And the only way that we can do that is to put bodies on scene. That's what really makes a difference. And I know that you guys saw that over there with all the equipment and the stuff that they have to go through.
And then finally, we're talking about the average response time by each zone. And as we can see, the ones that are highlighted in red would be the Station Four areas. And I mean, this slide, as it did during the last presentation that we gave, just identifies that the time it takes for us to get from Station One or Station Two to the Station Four area zones is slowly increasing and getting higher. And it's definitely higher than it is all throughout the rest of the township. If you, that correlates directly to the previous slides that we were talking about. Time is of the essence to get on these scenes to make the outcome changes we need to make.
So before we keep going, I don't want to keep talking and not have any questions answered. So is there any questions on that data? And I know that some of this stuff is repeat data, like I said, some of the stuff that we talked about last year. But I think it's important for you to see that it hasn't changed, right? And like I said, Jamie is the guru when it comes to stats, and he pulls this stuff up and he looks at it daily. And we know that these trends are not going to change. So any questions on the data or the need for the station out there?
So looking at the average response time by zone, there's a couple other zones that are kind of up there, specifically looking at Six. So if there's another, if we add a Station Four, are you then anticipating having that station added would decrease response times for other zones as well?
I absolutely agree that it will reduce some of those response times to those other zones because what happens is when one station empties to go down there and then we get another call, you're seeing some of those things that would inflate those response times. But also, Zone Six is really the northwest corner. It might not be the actual northwest corner, but it's up in that general area. It's also one of our least, as far as run volume goes, one of our least-used zones. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't, you know, we still care about that zone very much, and we want to get people there. It's just that currently, the zones that can do the most good for the most residents at this time is the Station Four area zones. But to answer your question directly, the expectation is once we add personnel, that's more people to respond to runs. So therefore, yes, our expectation is that all the response times to all the zones would decrease. I'm not sure if Zone Six is ever going to get that low till we make a recommendation for a...
Don't listen to him. Don't listen to him. But honestly, I mean, to go back to that question, I think there were decisions made in the past that we live with today, right? And so we'll continue to deal with that in the best manner that we can. And we know that we saw the difference by putting two more personnel at Station Two, right? And so maybe someday in the future, you know, when in a perfect world, we can come back and say, hey, we want to add two more people to Station Three, and that could absolutely reduce that, you know, that time in those west-of-ridge area.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a similar question as Kate, so I'm glad you guys were able to answer that. Mutual aid, we added the personnel, it came down. Would you guys say that we're still more a user than a donor of mutual aid? Or with the volumes that we have?
Earlier in the year, when we were dealing with a lot of COVID issues with personnel, I was kind of nervous at the time because our mutual aid was, we were actually requesting it more than we were giving it. And that's a rarity for us. And like we've always said, that's like a measure of resiliency of the agency. Are we able to handle our own calls, or are we going to rely on our neighbors? Sometime around June, July-ish, it flipped over, and we began providing more mutual aid than we were requesting. And currently, I haven't done the last month, but we were 20 runs ahead, meaning if you look at it like that, we provided 20 more mutual aid calls than we requested. Another thing that's happening too that we're experiencing is a lot of these mutual aid calls will come in, and our guys might be overrun for a moment, and there's no ambulances in the township because they're at hospitals. The call will come in, and the initial call will be like, okay, we don't have anyone, we need mutual aid. Mutual aid will start coming this way, and then our ambulance will clear, and then we would clear that mutual aid call. We really don't keep track of canceled mutual aids because sometimes they don't get documented like you would think they would because they never came, so it never got documented. But we're also experiencing that. But that also correlates to response times that are increasing because ambulances are also coming from further distances.
Right.
So, and we keep seeing that as the run volume keeps on increasing. So those are things that we're really trying to track and to be able to, you know, articulate and report on.
You're also saying that sometimes they cancel them out also.
They have, they have. That's another strange situation where we've requested mutual aid from some agencies, and they've been almost here. We're waiting on them. Like, we'll have someone on scene rendering care, but they need an ambulance. And they get almost into Canton, and they call and say, we're getting called back to our town because a call came in there. And that is a discussion that really has to be had at the chief's level, which we've already had because, well, that just slows up the process for everyone. If you don't want to give us the last resource, then, you know, don't commit to it, and we'll call another agency. You know, it's just perfectly acceptable.
And one thing I would add to that is that fortunately, we have the personnel and the equipment on every single rig to treat those patients. So it's not as though we're showing up to the scene and we're waiting 20 minutes for an ambulance from a neighboring community, and nothing's happening. We're still doing all the treatments that an ambulance would do when they show up. So we're very fortunate that you guys have given us that ability to do that and make all of our engines advanced life support as well. Any other questions? I'll keep moving. So I wanted to keep this short tonight, really, you know, go over these kind of stats and then talk a little bit about what we're looking at for staffing. We know that in order to open the fire station, we have three shifts. Four personnel at that station equals the 12 firefighters. I know when we talked back in April of last year, you know, my wish list was 19 firefighters. I had a lot of discussion with Wendy about that. We know that we can't afford that right now. We know the township can't afford that right now. And this would be the minimum to really get that station up and running. And the reason that we're talking about this tonight is really, you know, if you agree to build the station, which I believe we're moving in that process, we know that it's a two-year, three-year process to get that completed, right? There's above and beyond the financing side of it, there's a whole bunch of construction issues going on right now. We can't even get the equipment. I think today we were talking to the architect from the dispatch center, and they said 80 months on electrical panels. So, I mean, it's going to take some time to build a fire station, right? The bigger issue is that we're running into this staffing issue currently at our current staffing. This is a diagram of just since March of this year. Like the deputy chief said, we've got a lot of people out on COVID. We've had people out on, you know, short-term disability. We've had issues with staffing. When we raised that minimum manning up from 17 to 19, it took away our ability to have that cushion of somebody calling in sick. And so we ended up, you know, filling with overtime, right? So this year, just since March, 151 days are the days that we had full staffing. 94 of those days since then, we've ran short. Now, that may only be for two or three hours in a day, but at 94 times during the year, we ran short on personnel. And the only way to fix that is to lower minimum manning, which obviously you know will reduce the response times, reduce the care, or hire personnel, right? So it's kind of a predicament that we're watching, and we know that, you know, we can make these recommendations to you all day long, right? And there's decisions that have to be made that are above my level, and they fall on your level. We'll continue to manage however this comes through, right? If we say, hey, we can't afford this, and we're not going to do this for three years, the deputy chief and I assure you, we will continue the care that we're providing. We will continue to do everything that we can. We're here to make those recommendations to give the best care and the best service to all the citizens in the community. And I think that that's kind of what we're kind of gauging and we're going off of. But that 12 personnel is going to make a big difference for that area. And I'll let Jamie talk a little bit about the shortages and the issues that we've been having. As you know, you know, personnel are jumping ship, right? We've got possibly five people leaving this Friday. So with that being said, you know, where is this staffing going to come from? And that's why we're ahead of this. We're trying to get ahead of this. And that's what we're trying to always do, right? Stay ahead and think two steps ahead. And so if we know that we're going to need these personnel two years down the road, we really need to start looking for them today, really, or next year, starting in '23.
So within the state of Michigan, you know, we're also tracking, you know, available workforce. Who are we going to get to respond to these medical calls and these fire runs? And this is a current snapshot just from the MPFFU website. So that's the Michigan Professional Firefighters Union's website. And this is kind of a little bit of a strange slide because there were so many agencies looking. It was hard to condense it all to get it on one thing. But basically, what this is saying is that there's 22 agencies that are looking for at least one firefighter right now. And then as the list goes down, there's four agencies that are looking for two, one agency that's looking for three, two agencies that are looking for five, so on and so on. You guys can see that on the slide. I think it's relevant to see that down at the bottom with the asterisk there, that there's six agencies out there that don't specify how many people they want. They're just an open job request, looking for people. This is also not helped by the fact that the state of Michigan last year graduated 300 paramedics. 300 paramedics passed their national registry test and are working. That's not guaranteeing, though, that they want to become firefighters. And it's also not guaranteeing that they are in this tri-county area here either, that they want to work here. That's for the entire state of Michigan. So this represents approximately 82 jobs that are available right now. With only 300 possible new paramedics, I mean, you can see how it just dwindles the workforce down where there isn't even able-bodied people to have the credentials to work. But I will say this, I mean, we just did interviews on last Friday, and there were three great candidates that are somewhere along in their process of getting their credentials together. And, you know, that gave me hope on Friday that, yeah, there is some people out there that are going to want to come here and, you know, because the agency is so good and the township's so great. So, you know, we do have that silver lining.
And I'll also add that, you know, this is 80 openings, and that's just through the Michigan Professional Firefighters Union website. Not everybody's posting on there.
We're not on there. Well, we're on there, but we're not on this slide.
We didn't put ourselves on the slide. But we know that, you know, there's well over 250 job openings in the state for firefighters, right? And we're seeing it, right? We know that they're stealing from us, we're stealing from them. The market's not out there to have these employees, right? There's just not enough young people going into the field to fill the gap that we have, right? And so, you know, that's a whole nother conversation we could have about retention and recruitment. And we're working on those fields, and we talked a little bit about it at the academy as well, right? We're starting a program up at the high school. We're going to try and group these young minds into becoming firefighters, and we're going to work our best to fix this issue in the next three years, right? But there's still a gap between now, when these kids are graduating from high school, until we can get them trained up. So a lot of great things coming that way, and I think that we'll see this change coming in the future where there'll be a big interest coming back to the firefighting field. So with that being said, you know, we kind of added up what it would cost. We ran through, you know, if we did six medics one year and six medics the next year, and then kind of got them trained up before the station opened, which is really the ultimate goal. You know, whether or not we can fill those positions is yet to be seen. But that's kind of where you sit, right? You know that we hire the 12 people, we have to promote three captains to run that station, and that's your final cost there, 1.7 million. And I had a lot of conversation with Wendy about this, Director Trumbull, and how we're going to, you know, fund this. And, you know, I was told that the only way that we can do it is not through the current revenue that we have, is to increase the revenue. So we all know what that means. And so that's really where it leads up to you guys, right? And so that's why I want to open it up, and you guys ask the questions, you know, be frank. I'll be honest with you, and we can see where we stand, you know? If there's other changes that we can see, you know, by all means, we're all ears. other changes that we can see, you know, by all means, we're all ears. We've just looked at it from every single angle that we can look at it in our eyes. And it's always good to see different perspectives or different ideas that maybe we're not seeing, you know? But it's a hard pill to swallow, right? And, you know, I think that at the end of this, like I said, no matter what decision you make, we are going to give the best care to these citizens here and our visitors in the township.
Right now, we do have a grant out to Senator Peters' office for funding of this fire station. It's also a request into the state. So we'll keep pushing for funding to bring it down so we can hopefully find something for the fire station. So that's the status of that one right now. Did you have any?
Sorry, that's just the cost of building the fire station, right? Not the personnel.
Not the staffing, right?
Yeah.
We're expensive.
So we don't really have a target date for when we would ever have a fire station, but you're saying that you can use the personnel today even if we don't get a fire station approved and built because of the delays in construction until, say, 2026 or something like that, that you still would be able to utilize the personnel to help improve the growing response times and things like that?
Well, one thing that I would say, and I kind of skipped over this, is our firefighters are getting burned out, right? They're working a ton of overtime. I already came to you once this year to increase the overtime budget, right? We see this day in and day out. And I mentioned this last week as well. That fatigue, it shows in the firefighters. We can see it daily, right? I had three accidents with vehicles over the past month, two of which were our fault and one which was not our fault. But that, all of those things is, I don't want to say directly, but it certainly correlates with their being tired and working long hours, right? They're doing 7296s, right? They're burned out and they're asking for help. And, you know, a lot of the firefighters now, they don't want to work overtime, right? So they're not taking those shifts. And that's where kind of you see where we fall below. It's not that we're not offering it. We're offering it and they're just not filling it. I know that the goal, if we were to bring them onboard, would be to increase that minimum daily. But at the same time, we know that there's contract information or contract issues that only allow us to have four personnel off a day. So we take and we add 12 personnel to the department. Now we're going from 23 a shift to, what, 27 a shift, right? We have to allow some more time off, right? They're earning more time than they can use. And so, I mean, I know that's a lot of contract issues as well, but if they earn this time and they can't get it on the calendar to take it, they just get burned out.
Just to follow up on that, would you say those numbers, the cost of overtime, would be lessened by bringing on the new firefighters? So, because we're paying, I don't know what it is, time and a half or whatever it is, would, are those baked into those numbers already? Do you know? Or can we, maybe we can find out?
They're not. I can tell you right now that this year, we're going to be over $800,000 in overtime, right?
And that would be lessened if we had more employees, obviously?
It would be lessened, but, I mean, there's still going to end up being overtime, right? Because we still have to send people to training. We still have to bring them in for those things. For years, we were running on, you know, $400,000 of overtime, right? So I know for sure that we could easily cut $400,000 out of overtime costs, you know, safely and probably a little bit more. But also, you know, when we're able to have those employees take that time off, it's also going to cut down on some of the cash outs at the end of the year, right? So they're cashing out their PTO time because they can't use it. So, you know, 216 hours they may cash out. And some of those people will still cash it out because they want to be here and they want the extra money. But some of the people cash it out strictly because they haven't had a chance to use their time.
Yep.
So for 2023, I mean, how many openings do we have posted now? I mean, without even this? We have openings now out there?
Currently, we have two openings. We have a retirement that's scheduled for next week. So that'll be three openings. You know, we never filled the inspector position that you guys approved earlier in the year just because we didn't have the manpower to do that. And we didn't want to move anybody upstairs and short-shift them more. So we're kind of running short with prevention and we're running short down there. We had Mo's retirement back in June, so that has not been filled. And then if we end up having the, you know, the five personnel leave here next week, we're going to be in a deficit of eight. And hopefully, you know, like the deputy chief said, we've got three on the line, right? And we'll have them hired in a month. And then we can work on the other two that we're still kind of helping through the process right now, passing a CPAT test in the national registry. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that they get through that.
So if we had the budget, would you be able to hire the people? Do you have people available to hire? That's the big question.
I think there's a lot of, you know, I mean, without getting into too much contract talk, I think that there's a lot of stealing going on between these agencies, right? And there's a lot of, you know, hey, the grass is greener over here. And I don't want you guys to think, and I told this to the deputy supervisor, right, the sky is not falling, right? We are okay and we are going to be okay. Just because five people leave, we had 13 people leave back in 2013. And I think we're better than we ever have been. I think we continue to grow and we will make this happen. We will find the people and we will pull them. And I think that through some contract negotiations and some changes, we can definitely do that.
It's not unusual. Any community I go to, any community meeting, this is at the top of the list. Even Debbie Dingle brought it up. So she's hearing it everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't really a question, more of a comment. But given how the community has grown and new businesses coming in, and, I mean, I feel like this is something that is top priority for us to figure out, especially as we continue to grow as a community. And, you know, I think about being on the planning commission and like the apartments that are coming in and the assisted living places. It's just more capacity for, you know, public services and for public safety. And so that's a huge part of it. And so I think it is, you know, top priority to figure out. And, you know, I can appreciate the challenges that hiring is right now. So if we're able to bring in good people and keep them and train them, and I think that would be good moving forward regardless of the fire station. But I think we have to figure it out.
This was a great presentation. Real quick, and I know this would be a temporary fix, but are there grants out there like we had before to hire a couple of? I know we would be obliged after, what, two years, then you pay. Are there programs?
Yeah, so every year, there's, I mean, Senator Peters was, you know, instrumental in getting that approved again, right? So the SAFER grant is what we did. And we can certainly write for that again. You know, obviously, there's no guarantee, but we could certainly, you know, if you say, "Go ahead and write for that," I'll write for it again. I mean, we were successful the first time. For six people, saved us $1.7 million, right? So, I mean, that's three years of salary or pretty close to three because it's 75% and then 25% and 25% of their salary that's paid for. But either way, I think that there's opportunities out there to get that and especially with the new grant writer that we have that can probably assist. I think there's definitely a chance of that. The problem is, is that, you know, once you accept that grant, you have, and this is how we kind of lost out on, I want to say about $30,000 of that grant, was because we couldn't get them hired fast enough. We had to get six people hired within two months, right? They give you two months to hire that personnel. And once you miss that two months, then that kind of starts falling off the deadline of what you can collect again. So I'm all about writing another grant and going that route.
So what, I mean, what is the reason people also aren't, I mean, you probably don't know, aren't coming in to, you know, you used to have, like you said, 300 applications. Everybody did. Why aren't we filling the pipeline? How do we start recruiting younger people to want to go into this line of service?
I think I could speculate on that all day long. But, you know, I think there was a big push for college degrees and, you know, when we were coming into the field, we didn't want a dust job and we wanted to, you know, we saw the great, you know, benefits and all this stuff, right? And, hey, we can work 10 days a month, right? And it's cool running, we had adrenaline rush, right, running into fires. So I think some of that was a little bit lost. And I'll be honest with you, we got cocky, right? I mean, the fire service, we had the choice of whoever we wanted to have. And we didn't have to do recruitment and we didn't have to get out there and push our career, right? And that kind of fell to the wayside because everybody wanted to be a firefighter. They liked them, right? And it's not that way anymore, right?
I do like how you're going to try and recruit at the high school and that. So I know you are starting a process. I think that'll be very helpful.
Yeah, actually, we've teamed up with the college and these kids can walk out of high school with their firefighter one and two and their EMT class and pretty much an associate degree coming out of high school. So all they'll need to do is just take a paramedic class and they can be done with that within a year and be hired. And that's all paid for and they can do it right in school. So it's going to be exciting when we get that off the ground. We've already had some interest. We're going to be up at Career Day next week as well. So try and get those kids started in it.
Emery, would you and the teams, finance, Wendy, and the public safety department present us with ways to come up with the revenue? I mean, there's all different alternatives, maybe not that many, but the hard and the easy and, you know, so we can make decisions?
Yeah.
And I will say this. We've, I've referenced our fire department as the A team many times, right? And in fire departments, you can have the A being the C team, right? And so we really are the best of the best, right? We provide the best service. We're ALS engines. We're all paramedics. We're doing the state-of-the-art stuff. We're one of the three accredited in this whole state, right? Then there's the B departments, right? They're, you know, maybe full-time departments, but they don't transport on their own, right? They have somebody else coming in. The standard of care is not there where we do that. And then there's the C departments, right? And we really, we show up every single time with our A game. Part of our problem is that we have a B team response to some of our areas of the township, right? And we want to be A across the board. And that's what we're always looking for. And that's why we're always looking at the continuous improvement is to make sure that we're delivering the A service to the citizens. We don't have all the answers, like I said. I wish we could wave a magic wand and take care of it, but this community is growing a lot, you know? Like Josie Foster said, I mean, we continue to grow. We continue to see that. And it's not going to go anywhere. It's going to be something that you guys are going to have to address for long into the future.
One more idea. Have you talked to the, Thomas from the chamber about the Future Fit program that they're putting together? It's mainly the trade skills, of course, that are in similar situations where there's just not enough people going towards any of the non-college routes. And they're putting together, along with our Canton Foundation, something called Future Fit. And it's bringing in, you know, people, same kind of thing that you guys are, maybe you don't need it because you're already doing it, but same kind of thing where it's showing the, funding a path to recruiting your workforce. So scholarships to go and learn trades, the two-year programs and some of the trades at Schoolcraft or some of the other two-year programs. So
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It might be worthwhile just to be a part of that. So when they're talking, they're selling your stuff as well, selling kids on that.
That's right. They came in here about a month ago to present that program.
Yeah, they did a lunch and learn here for the community. But, yeah, I would say both police and fire would be great to have that as just two more paths that is advertised for.
We will absolutely do that. I think that's great. And speaking of that, I know that some of you may know that the state just came down with $30 million as well for training of paramedics. So we're going to grab some of that money as well and hopefully we can grab some students out of there.
Right. Yeah, I saw that in one of the governor's announcements, trying to recruit that. Yeah, they're trying. So they're trying to help us.
Yes.
Yes. So just more of a comment, but I think that this is one of the most important services that the township provides. I spoke a little bit at the academy about some of my experiences having had to have EMS called for me. But I also know that when a family needs help, they may not be thinking about it until they do need help. There are families like mine where, you know, I spoke about it before, but I have a child who has a severe life-threatening allergy. And when we were looking for places to live, we actually researched whether or not advanced life support was offered in, you know, through the paramedics, through EMS as opposed to life, as opposed to basic life support because my child might need that. So just, you know, families may not think about it ahead of time if they might need these services. But when they do need them, it's so important that we can get there, get there fast and do a wonderful job like we do here. So I just, I think this is just of the utmost importance.
Thank you.
And this affects our whole public safety department. As you know, the police are experiencing the same shortages. So that would be good to try to get them in that. And they, as you train them in CPR, so if they get there before you, they start the CPR also. So they're part of the team.
Yeah, we all have to work together, obviously. Like that slide showed, I mean, we can't do it alone and we need to have them there doing that stuff or the citizens there doing it. But like you said, I mean, these residents, they may not know the services we provide. And we know that because we go out there and we have these study sessions or we have, you know, information meetings, informational meetings. And when we're doing strategic planning, they just don't know what we do, right? And so I think it's important, A, that we get that word out, right? Because I know that we always get support from the community. And that's really not an issue. They always support us. I was just at Coney Island this morning and they're thanking me for the service and the things that we do. And that is wonderful because we've never had that issue. And he's, you know, the gentleman was saying, "It's horrible how police and fire are not, you know, supported nowadays." And I said, "Well, we don't have that issue. You know, we're supported." So that goes back to you guys and it goes back to the community that we live in. It really is the whole village that rises up. And I think that we, as the fire department, you know, as servants to the community, we appreciate everything that you guys do for us and getting us the equipment. And that's the conversations that we have with the firefighters, you know? When we go down there last week and, you know, there's always going to be grumbling, right? And we need to fix this or we need to fix that. They know that they're fortunate to work here. They know that they're fortunate to have the things that we provide for them because there's not really wants. You guys asked that question, right, at the board meeting, "What are your needs?" right? They're not coming out with a lot of needs, right? You know, I mean, there's little things here and there and we know that, you know, there's always the contract talk, right? But as far as needs go, you guys have given them the new engines, the fire stations, the equipment. I mean, we continue to see these ALS costs go up. We know it's going to cost more money every single year. We know the fuel costs are going up. We know that every single thing about our service is not a revenue maker, right? It costs money and we're expensive, like I said at the beginning. We know that. And we hope that we can continue to give that same care that we've been able to give, that you guys have given us permission to do.
One slide you didn't have here that you had in previous presentations is the impact of the senior facilities.
Yeah, I know I've always beat that up. So I kind of left that off, but I just, you know, we know that every bed is about one and a half runs, you know? And we're continuing to see that. We know we've got a big home opening up up on Ford Road there. How many runs do we already have down at the new one off of Sheldon and Gaddy's? They've got five beds open and we've already been...
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's several. We know, and, you know, they weren't even really supposed to use us that much. When we went and toured their facility, they said, "Well, we'll probably hardly ever see you guys, but this is where you're going to come in." guys, but this is where you're going to come in. And sure enough, though, you know, we've been there several times.
I want to say we were there seven times already, and don't quote me on this, seven times already, and they've only had five beds filled.
Right.
So, I mean, if that gives you an example of what happens. And this is not new, right? When Heartland opened, we had that same conversation, you guys are never going to be here, we are there all the time.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I thank you guys for your time, certainly.
Appreciate it.
As always, we appreciate your support and hope you have a good night.
The presentation is good, thank you.
Thank you. Try to keep it nice and short for you guys.
All right, great. Let me see. Let me see if anyone's online for the next item, which is public comment. Public comment, public comment. We have two people. Any public comment? You can raise your hand if you have public comment. Okay, no public comment. Anyone in the room? Nope, no one here for public comment. Any of the staff? Any additional board comments about anything else? Nope. Okay, great. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's ended, thank you.